I'd like to call the October 6, 2020, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin our meeting this evening, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence during which people may offer a silent prayer or to remember the more than 210,000 people who have died in our country this year as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. We offer our prayers and help to all who have become sick as a result of this contagious disease and express our thanks to all those people who work on the front lines and caring for our communities. Let us all reflect on what we can do to help one another and our neighbors as we work through this challenging time. Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at this meeting. All right, we come to the consent agenda. Are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda?
So I have a question about the agenda itself.
Okay.
I'd like to move up the INCA on new business. I'd like to move up the INCA Barn project. It says that I'll be doing the presentation, but we should have Michaela Bashir, the ag teacher, she's back there, and FFA advisor, Kevin Franklin, both of those are here, so we want them to do the presentation. If we can move it up, that would be probably...
If there's no objection, then we will be happy to do that.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions about any other items on the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as outlined with including the moving the INCA Barn project to the beginning of new business?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we're going to do public comment at 5:15. We're just about there. Mr. Joyner, is there someone who's teed up to comment? Why don't we go ahead and is there just one person or how many do we have?
Just one.
Well, why don't we go ahead and invite that person to share their public comments? And if anybody else calls in, it'll be probably after 5:15 by the time the first person's done. So why don't we go ahead and hear from that resident?
And it won't be anybody calling in.
Oh, right. Right, okay, that's right, the time's passed. Very good. We can't hear the person if they're speaking.
We can't hear.
Okay. So it looks like we're having some technical difficulties.
I don't know why we can't hear him.
Is it?
What I can do is I can call him and walk up to the podium and you can hear him now.
I think that might be the best we can do.
Might be the best thing to do. He finally figured out how to get to you. He said he talking.
Hey, Don. We're having some technical difficulties. I'm just going to put you on speakerphone at the dais, is that okay?
Don, you needn't have to worry about it. I told you not to worry about it, okay?
Too late, you're here. Cassie, can you...
I was trying to tell him not to worry about it because I've got some kind of reverb. I can hear it right now. And let me do that, try to mute everything. But this, we need to work these bugs out.
I know.
Because I couldn't log in, I could not log in on V-Bid, and you need to have something over there about five, six minutes early so that we can get a comment in. And right now on Zoom, I have nothing but my picture is in public comments. So it's no big deal. I'm not worried about it. My comment was I'm still looking for ridership on the bus lines, the ridership per route. I think the commission should be getting that every month to monitor the routes and which one are turning a profit, which are costing an excessive amount per individual that rides. That just makes common sense. Number two, I want to compliment you on the fact that this is one time you gave the equal amount to the city and to the county on this safety program, about $27 each. Not what happened on the solar. On the solar, the city students got about $500 each, and the county students got about 160 each. So it appears to me that there is a special district tax, and this is addressed to Al because he does have concern for folks in his community. And bottom line is, if you look at the tax structure in the City of Asheville with the 15 cent school tax only for the Asheville city limits, it doesn't touch any of the schools that Asheville annexed. There might be a situation where taxes are contributing to keeping people at the bottom of the economic scale. So maybe that's more important, looking at the taxes, monitor them, and not wasting any of them to help people pull out of the hole they're in. So I want you to listen to what I'm saying. You probably won't, but I feel better by saying it, and I thank you very much for the opportunity. And like I said, let's work these bugs out sometime.
All right, thank you, Don. We will work, we'll keep working on the technology. We're all learning how to do this through this different environment. All right. We've got two public hearings. And the first one is on the Community Development Block Grant, and Rachel Nygaard is going to get us started on this one.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here with you this evening on the topic of Community Development Block Grant. You saw me last, three weeks ago, on September 15th, also presenting about this grant opportunity. At that time, I'm looking at you, Commissioner, we had planned to come back on October 20th, and we were asked if there was any way to move this along as any quicker. Could we do that because the grant application is first come, first served? And so we've been able to bring this back to you tonight for your consideration. Max, will you please pull up the presentation? Thank you. So as a reminder, this is Community Development Block Grant funding. I will provide some funding overview in case anybody wasn't here last time to hear that presentation, update you on the public input that we received since we saw one another on this topic last. Philip Harden from Health and Human Services will provide an overview of the draft application. And then we will request your action on two items. First, hold the public hearing. This is the second of two required public hearings as a part of the federal grant application process. And finally, consider the resolution approving the submittal of the application to the state for these federal funds. So as a reminder, these are federal funds initiated with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, passed on to the State Department of Commerce and made available to local jurisdictions. There's $27.5 million available statewide, and the maximum project amount is $900,000. An important note is that this is for what they call non-entitlement communities. The City of Asheville is an example of an entitlement community. So the city works directly with HUD, and they have their own CDBG CV grant program going on. In fact, the city is directing those funds towards subsistence payments, which you'll hear us propose to you this evening. So if awarded, these funds would help people in Buncombe County outside of the city limits of Asheville. So we came to you and held the first public hearing when we described what the funding could do. We got your approval on a citizen participation plan. You may remember there wasn't anyone present during the meeting with comment, but we had some great coverage in the Mountain Express after the meeting and received some public input by email and by phone, and we've drafted the application, which is with me tonight. So this is our second public hearing and our request for the resolution approving, authorizing the application. And then once we get the minutes from this meeting in a couple of weeks, we'll be ready to send these binders to Raleigh. We got 13 comments. As of the writing of this PowerPoint, there's actually one more that came in sent, so 14 members of the public contacted us with comments. And housing and utility assistance was the top need that people wrote in or called in asking us to fund with this grant. You can see a listing of some of the other ideas that people came up with. Some of them are not eligible activities under HUD, and as you'll hear later, some we looked at, are there other ways that we can leverage funding sources besides just this grant to help the community through? So with that, I will pass to Philip.
Good evening. As Rachel said, the proposed project is subsistence payments, and that would consist of rent, mortgage, or critical utilities, including internet access. As we know, school-aged children need that internet access to be able to participate. And the rationale behind that is that, as Rachel mentioned, with public comment, majority of the comments were for housing utility payments. The community need related to rent, mortgage is great. We've worked with PISCA. We've run a number of housing, mortgage, rent, utility programs already and are currently running one right now. So we have that in-house capacity to ramp up fairly quickly. We're running one with CRF funds right now, started that about the middle of September. And then we also have the ability to fund, have other funding sources available to us at HHS and through the community that can help remember that these subsistence payments need to be through COVID-related. And as we're working through CRF funding, we're seeing a lot of folks that are not necessarily COVID-related, but we're helping those folks with other funds. And then the structure of the grant application, Health and Human Services would take the lead. We would be responsible for that activity delivery or the project delivery and grant administration. And the delivery would be actually the eligibility piece. People, we would determine eligibility, submit for payments. Our finance office would submit the payments, the county finance office would process those payments, and then we would also be responsible for the grant administration, which is the overseeing of the grant, the audit, those types of things. And the proposed budget, it's a $900,000 grant. The proposed budget is for $814,000 of that $900,000 to go in direct assistance payments. The $60,000,416 activity delivery is for a temporary position in HHS finance to help process those payments. There's a lot of work that goes in on the finance side of the house when you're talking about serving hundreds and hundreds of folks. And then $25,000 would be what they call grant administration, and you're eligible for up to 10% of the grant or $90,000 for grant administration. But that's more high-level, like audit, consulting, those types of things.
All right.
I don't know that you need me back for this, but here we are at the end. There are two proposed actions to hold the public hearing and consider the resolution.
All right, so I'll call the public hearing to order at 5:27 PM. Mr. Joyner, are there, or any other staff, are there any comments that need to be shared?
No one raised a civil public comment or did a public hearing.
Okay, great, thank you. Then I'll close the public hearing at 5:28 PM, and we'll discuss the proposal. I do, I have a couple of questions. So we've appropriated some CARES funding for this same general community need, which we're hoping will sort of help the community get through the next few months until hopefully this proposal is awarded and we get some additional funding. Do we have any outlook based on just how things are progressing right now, whether the $400 dollars in funding that was appropriated, how long that's likely to, you know, when that will be exhausted? Do we have any best estimate on that?
We have only, that's available only until December 30th. And if we exhaust it prior to that, we can look at our coronavirus relief grant and see if there's any ability to add to that, but it cannot be used past December 30th. And these CDBG funds would not be coming in until the beginning of the new calendar year. Did you want to add more specific?
Yes. We started about September 15th with the CRF funds. So about three weeks, we've expended a little over 110,000 of those funds already. We've had 350-something requests already for assistance. We've not necessarily done a public campaign for that yet. It's been more of a soft rollout. So yeah, I guess would be, once we do that public campaign, which may be in the coming week, those funds will probably last a month, six weeks, maybe eight weeks.
We don't know when, so we, these funds will not become available to actually utilize until after January 1st, but we expect to be notified of whether it's funded and fully funded before the end of the year. Do we have a sense of like what's most likely when we'll get the information on it's being funded or not?
The grant hopefully will go in on October the 21st, probably a couple of weeks before you're notified, two to three weeks before you're notified. So maybe mid-November, mid-November to late November, hopefully. It is a first-come, first-served type of grant. So, and I think a lot of counties are just now ramping up to do their whole grant process.
Okay. Do, based on the number of folks we've been helping out so far, do we have a sense for sort of what the average amount of funding, like if 350 requests have come in, and maybe there's some reasons that, I don't know, I don't know what the criteria are, maybe not all of those will be funded, but what's the average amount that, you know, resident gets helped out on in this regard?
I did that last night. The actual average that we're helping with people right now is right at about $1,300.
Okay. So that 350 request by itself might, might exhaust the, I mean, the current request might exhaust the current pledge funding.
And that would be correct. We, of that 350, there's a number that we've not actually contacted yet. We actually approved 91 of those requests. We've denied 52 of them because it is CRF money, which means that you have to tie it back to a COVID-related loss, like loss of income, those types of things. And the vast majority of the denials you'll see are because they don't meet that requirement.
So someone might have housing insecurity for a different reason, but those particular funds couldn't be used to help them?
That is correct. We've helped a number of people with other funding sources that we have that fall into those categories. I think we've only denied three cases for being over income. So it's not an income issue, it's more of a COVID, tying it back to that COVID, the pandemic, basically.
And so one other question, and just for a little bit of context, Commissioners, the Affordable Housing Subcommittee was meeting earlier today, and we're going to be bringing recommendations to the commission about the housing funds that we budgeted in different, we've received different proposals, and there's some proposals related to this same concern. And so we're, we were trying to kind of understand how this application relates to some of the other proposals that the Subcommittee's been looking at, so this is helpful. So one of those proposals was from PISCA Legal Services, and I think we're trying to kind of, again, kind of figure out how these things work together, what Health and Human Services is doing and what PISCA Legal is doing. Could you just summarize for us, again, we talked about this when we appropriated the funds, but for the $400,000 in funds that we've appropriated, and then there was $75,000 on top of that to PISCA Legal. Do I have those numbers right?
That's correct.
Could you talk about the role, like what's PISCA Legal doing with those funds? And then, you know, and then the other funds, could you kind of just, kind of walk us through kind of the roles and responsibilities between the different agencies?
With the CRF funding program going on right now, we did have that $75,000 contract with PISCA Legal, and those are for legal services. They were already working with a number of people who are in an eviction process, so they're providing the legal assistance to those families and making referrals to HHS to determine eligibility and try to forestall or for, take care of those eviction situations that families may be in.
So they could kind of help make sure people's rights were being respected legally as well as kind of connect people to resources, like the county's resources?
That is correct. And they, they, they're, as of today, I think they've made about 20 referrals, but they have a number of referrals in the pipeline also.
Okay, this might be a little out of order, but Sybil, would you mind if I asked you a question about, because we were just, we were having the same discussion, I was just trying to understand how the different parts could work together, or if, in the proposal that PISCA Legal gave us for county funding, and it was a pretty big request, it was like over $600,000. So of those funds, if they were appropriated, they would be used to both provide some staff support for PISCA Legal so they could continue to do the legal advocacy for residents, but then also a good percentage of those funds would just be additional funds to actually kind of help resolve issues with landlords, right, in terms of people who are in arrears or might be concerned about that? So it's both of those purposes, is that right?
Yes, so my understanding is the $660,000 that they requested, that is for tenant-based rental assistance. Those are funds that would actually go directly to the landlord or whomever, and then the $25,000 was for administrative support.
Okay, so none of the funds they've asked for are actually to pay staff to do additional kind of legal advocacy. It's all more direct financial support for people?
That's my understanding of the $25,000 is admin support.
Yeah. Sorry, I didn't scan the room to see everyone we've got on hand for this.
There is, just as a minor correction, there is a small portion of the $650,000, so on a per-unit basis, there is an administrative fee associated with each of those assistance pieces for the gamut of applicants that would be received. So there's an administrative grant request as well as an administrative cost for each assistance that's provided. But really, it's to operate an in-house tenant-based rental assistance program similar to programs offered by Eblen or Alida. It's bringing that in.
This is really helpful in terms of, to me at least, understanding the different approaches. And if, and if we receive the, these CDBG funds, the current thinking is that none of those funds would be used to contract with, to do an additional contract with PISCA Legal Services, is that correct?
Y'all might as well hang around.
That would be correct. The $814,000 that's in, that we're asking for is direct assistance, and the only thing that was taken out of the $900,000 ask is the $60,000 for HHS support staff, for finance, and then the $25,000 administration dollars.
Okay, all right, thank you, I feel...
And those $25,000, if we don't spend them, can be reverted back to direct assistance. I want, I want that to be clear also.
Okay. All right, thank you all. I don't have any other questions for now, other questions?
No, I just, Chairman, I'm glad you brought that up. I was thinking the same thing, and we just had this conversation not too, not too long ago about, but it's, it seems like it's an easy, if you get a bunch of people together and you ask them what their needs are, there's a lot of people that, you know, need some assistance with their, with their payments. And, but I think, Matt, the, I want to say PISCA Legal was, you remember how much, 8% or administrative costs? There was, there was administrative cost associated with that, and that'll come out later, but we're just trying to...
So the way that that program, under the guidance for the Affordable Housing Services Program, works is that there's a cap of $2,500 of assistance per household, so they applied for the full cap for each household they proposed, as well as, I believe it was, $277 admin charge for each of those units. I don't have the number right in front of me, but it's roughly 10%, 10% to 11% admin charge, separate again from the $25,000 application for starting up the program, and that's a 100% administrative cost.
Yeah, and again, I know this is a little unusual for us to be asking about stuff that's really at the committee level, but because they are so related, it is helpful, I think, to just sort of understand this while we've got all the right people in the room. And the PISCA Legal funds for tenant-based assistance, those funds, if we approve their proposal, they, the funds do go directly to PISCA Legal Services, right? So PISCA Legal would be administering those payments out to resolve various needs.
So the traditional method that we provide tenant-based rental assistance, which is how we would propose to carry that forward, is a reimbursement basis. So they would handle the cost, they would incur the upfront expenses, and then request reimbursement for those, providing substantiated documentation for that.
So they would pay it, and then the county would pay them back? So we control it?
Yes.
We control it?
And it would be, there would be a contract in place, you know, if, if the committee were to recommend it and the Board were to approve that, then we would go into contract that would spell out the expectations of both parties and identify for them how they would submit claims for reimbursement.
Thanks, Matt. Are there any other questions, or is there a motion on the resolution approving submittal of state CDBG CV application?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Great. Thank you all for helping us out with that. Next up is a public hearing on an amendment to personnel ordinance related to vehicle usage policy. Michael Free is going to present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is a short, sweet, simple update to our personnel ordinance. For a couple of years now, our excess liability insurance carrier for autos has requested that we add a provision in policy and include education to employees who might be driving on the job. So this would apply whether or not you're driving a county-owned motor vehicle or driving a personal vehicle. And it's just stuff that makes sense that's consistent with state law. The request is that county employees would be prohibited from driving a county-owned vehicle or personal vehicle while they're texting or emailing while operating the vehicle. Don't operate the vehicle and use a laptop, tablets, portable media devices. Don't read a map or type a document or printed electronic material. And you must pull over to the side of the road or another safe location before checking messages, returning calls, text messaging, emailing, reading maps, et cetera. If it's safe to do so, law enforcement and EMS would be exempt from these provisions. And that's currently allowed by state law and by the current vehicle usage policy. So this is a public hearing, we had a notice and put this on before you for today for approval. Did it quickly because the insurance carrier, Safety National, asked that it be done to keep the negotiated rates before October 14th. So the date sort of snuck on, up on us, so we added it to the, at this time. The vehicle usage policy will come back to the board in the not-too-distant future, just for normal cleanup over time and to put into common form with other policies.
All right, so make sure I'm clearing what you're, you're asking for, we need to hold a public hearing.
Yes.
And then you're asking us to approve the amendment to the personnel ordinance tonight as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. All right, let's go ahead and call the public hearing, we'll open that at 5:42. Do we have any public comments? Close the public hearing at 5:43 PM.
So I have a question. So when you read, when I read the latter part of this, and you have a GPS device on your phone, who pulls over to the side of the road and reads that GPS directions? That's the way it's written. If I'm reading it right, drivers must pull over safely to the side of the road or another safe location before checking messages, get that, turning calls, text messaging, emailing, reading maps for directions, or program, it's a programming resetting GPS devices.
And there's, I'm sure that you can do that verbally now with modern.
Bluetooth, you can Bluetooth all this.
But if you're talking, the intent is talking about digitally with your fingers poking in an address. I want to get from here to 205 College Street.
We're not saying that, though. Are we?
Or programming slash resetting GPS devices, I believe that is what it says. That's my interpretation.
No mentioning in here of Bluetooth, which everybody does. I mean, everybody's, says call, you know, call Rita, don't do it. Says, you know, you tell Siri to call whatever.
We're preempted to the extent that this is not consistent with state law. State law has language that's very similar to this, but it exempts any audio ability in vehicles. So that would take precedence. Yeah, this is handheld devices, laptops, iPhones that you're just plugging it in.
Yeah, there's just no mention in there Bluetooth. It says use a cell, use of cellphone or other mobile device to text or email while operating a vehicle. I mean, if, if you're using Bluetooth and you tell, tell your phone to, you know, set an appointment for tomorrow and it's laying in your seat. And I'm not trying to strain, strain over all this, I just want to make sure that we're not creating something that is.
And Commissioner, we can clarify that because the intent was handheld. So if you're on your phone and you need to type in your address, you need to pull over, if you need to text someone.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
It's about handheld. If that is not clear, we will make sure we clarify it was about handheld.
Yeah, I'm with you on that, I mean, you can, I mean, if your phone can hear you anymore, you can tell it, you can tell it what to do when you're, you know, to call someone or whatever.
Most any phone, digital phone today, modern technology, yes, I agree. Again, I think this is part of language and statutes and language and policies catching up with technology, and we're not going to in the near future. And again, that's the intent of it, and that's to the extent of the request of Safety National and in line with the current state law. And this will come back to this board within the next few months, and I'm sure we'll pick up any other discrepancies and make it as clear as we can.
All right, is there a motion?
So move.
All right, there's a motion and a second to amend the personnel ordinance as outlined by staff and staff report. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Free.
Yes, sir.
All right, next up, we have the county manager's report.
Commissioners, you all have seen the news about the Maui Invitational. We do have a video, and I'll ask Tim Love, he's here. So Matt's can key that video, and we can show you just a little bit of video, and anyone has to make any comments.
So that video is going out and let people see what we're, what we're getting ready to do with Asheville. They've already started doing work in the Cherokee Center. So if you go in there now, you will see it being transformed from what they say from a high school gym to more of an NBA sports arena. So that is happening now, and anybody wants to make any comments, I know Commissioner Edwards asked to make comments.
Thank you, Ms. Pender. As you all know, I serve on the Sports Commission Board. And I just want to take a minute, though, to acknowledge the incredible work that Dent Bradford and his team put into this. It's just an incredible opportunity for our community to bring an incredibly well-known basketball tournament to our community. And for all of you North Carolina fans, you get to bring your Tar Heels right here in our backyard, and doing so in a very controlled environment during a really tough time in our community and our country. But I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the county staff who also had a hand in making this happen. Avril Pender's incredible leadership and openness to having these conversations really helped drive this decision forward, as well as Fletcher Tove for his work on the public health aspect, and Dr. Mullen Dor. But the name that continues to come up in our Sports Commission meetings that was the behind-the-scenes person, still the behind-the-scenes person driving the Maui Invitational forward is Tim Love. So just want to say thank you to each of you at the county level who have made this happen for our community. The Sports Commission are incredibly grateful. And I also want to thank each of you as my Commissioner colleagues that you were incredibly open to the conversation and to bringing the tournament here as well. So I'm looking forward to November and bringing a touch of Hawaii to Asheville.
All right, thank you, thank you so much, Commissioner Edwards and Ms. Pender. All right, is there any other information?
I'd like to make, I just want to make a quick comment as a, you know, County Representative on the TDA Board regarding the Sports Commission. In the past, Commissioner Newman, you know, would probably echo this, in the past, the Sports Commission has become a line item that has, has been a challenge, you know, in funding in the past. And, you know, I just want people to understand that there is, there is vital work that is done on the Sports Commission. And that, you know, we need to practically fund that. You know, we need to make sure that, that, you know, tax money is utilized properly there, but that it doesn't need to become something political, you know, every year as a budget cycle because they do work very hard and work very closely with the county, and I appreciate, I appreciate what they do. Showing the, showing the beach was terribly unfair, though, in the video, you know. I mean, it was just, I mean, who doesn't want to raise their hand and go there right now? Oh, I know, I know. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, great job, everyone who's been involved in this. It's going to bring a lot of great attention to our community from across the country, so it's really exciting. All right, we don't have any old business, so we come to new business. And as we discussed, we're going to take up the consideration of the INCA barn agenda item first.
Yes. So let me, just want to make sure I get everything, everything right. So we have with us Michaela Bashir, the teacher and FFA advisor, Kevin Franklin, agricultural teacher and FFA advisor, both from INCA High, and Alex Payne is with us, INCA FFA president and student. So I'm going to turn this presentation over to you guys, you can tell us a little bit about the, the project and why it's important. And I'm certainly hopeful the Commissioners will agree.
Yeah.
Alex is going to bring you a packet, all the Commissioners a packet.
Mr. Chair, Board, we'd first like to say thank you so much for allowing us to present this plea for some financial assistance to make this project a reality here for the INCA community, which will be there for decades. Our first plea is for the sake of equality or equity of the six Buncombe County high schools, five of those high schools have an animal science program. And INCA is the only one that does not have a relatively new or new or really nice barn to utilize animals for the hands-on experiences for their students. We're going to work through this packet really quickly. The first page is just a rendering of what the barn is going to look like. It's 60 by 45. The center section will, will be. Oh, I'm sorry. The center section will, will, is what is going to hold the animals, you know, and that will be a security issue also. We'll have the panels and food storage and actually the pens for the animals in the center section, the outside will be for storage. And Ms. Bashir is going to tell you some more about the reasons why this barn is so important to our community.
So first off, I would like to take a moment to tell you guys a little bit about agriculture education because agriculture education works a little bit differently from our other classes at the high school level. So our program has a three-circle model, which means we have three parts to our program. The first part is our classroom and laboratory, the second part is FFA, and the third part is SAE. So classroom and laboratory, the barn would serve as our laboratory space for our students where they get hands-on experience with agriculture. FFA is our student organization, so you can think of this as our training facility, just like sports teams have football fields, we have that training facility to prepare students for contests, which we call career development events because our students are gaining career skills through that. And the third part of our classes is SAE, which stands for Supervised Agriculture Experience. And this is where students get to choose their own project and get hands-on experience in agriculture. And how that relates to our students is that for our students that don't have that opportunity at home, we can provide those opportunities at the school for them to get their hours in their SAE. And we had that happen last year some. The second part I would like to talk about is just the excitement that this barn has brought to our community. Last year, when we were in virtual, we, right before we went into virtual, we converted a old tractor shed into a makeshift barn to house three dairy cows. And we converted an old shade house in order to house six chickens. And at converting all of those things, we were at max capacity in the opportunities we were able to provide our students. So many of my students reached out to me during virtual and said how much the barn, or like I said, our makeshift tractor shed that we turned into a barn, that those hands-on experiences really reinforced classroom material and helped make all of those things we were talking about in the classroom make sense and really motivated them to come to school and to do well in all of their classes because they were excited about those cows and those animals. Also, during virtual, this semester, I've been reaching out to parents. And many of the parents have told me that my class is their student's favorite class because their students are excited about this barn. The parents are excited about this barn, as well as our teachers. I actually had a science teacher come up to me in the hallway the other day and say how excited he was for this opportunity of us getting this barn and how, he had even spoken to the lunchroom ladies, that the lunchroom ladies were excited about this barn. Everyone at our school is excited about this barn. And the reason that they're excited is because this is something that is going to stand for generations to come. It isn't something that's just going to affect a few students. This is going to be a structure that's going to stand for years and be the pride of the INCA Chandler community. And not just the INCA Chandler community, but all of Buncombe County because it's providing students with skills that will prepare them for careers and for them to bring careers in animal science right here to Buncombe County. So it's something that's going to have a lasting impact on our community. Now I would like to turn the mic over to Alex Payne, our chapter president, for him to say just a few words about what this barn has meant to him as a student.
This barn, this barn to me has been an opportunity to get better at what I do, learn more about what I do, and increase my skills as a person in everyday life and my career. This new barn will provide more opportunities for fellow students, officers, members of FFA, and the teachers. Teachers can connect more with the children through the barn and give them more opportunities to learn about what they want to do as a career.
The last page is just culmination of the figures that it's going to cost. Basically, $75,000 is what it's going to cost to build this barn. And we've been working hard for five months to make this happen. It's actually happened really quickly, but we want to, we want to make the dream come true. We've, we applied for and received a $25,000 grant from Go Outside. Carolina Farm Credit was actually our first sponsor when we talked about it and gave us $5,000. And Kristy Cheek, who's the director of the Buncombe County Schools Foundation, has, has really been working hard, and she's, she's raised $6,000 to date also for us. So we're around a $30,000, $36,000 mark, I guess. And so we're about halfway to where we need to be. So any, any help from y'all would be much appreciated, and we're welcome to answer any questions that you may have for us.
So I'll just make a comment, you know, for the board. I was contacted regarding this project and, you know, they do have a deadline on some of this, and I appreciate the Commissioners putting this on the gin and looking at it. It's a, it's a great opportunity for the community, you know, literally you have a shed there, and because of being able to receive these larger funds, it gets you in an opportunity. Actually, you will be able to go back and even look at some of the estimates that you've got, you know, be able to negotiate and be able to, to, you know, receive quite a bit more money. The $15,000 is really just a, an amount that, you know, helps put you very close to your goal. And it's a, it's really a matching grant since you guys have more than, you know, well over $30,000 already raised. And it's just an opportunity to be able to, to close a hole of education in the, in the INCA area. And, you know, it's even more important today, I think, for people to be able to get outside, to be able to see the advantages of classrooms being actually outside. And this, this gives you a great learning opportunity. And was, was very, very, you know, proud to be able to bring it to the board for the board to take it, take a, a look at, at funding it. And I'm certainly excited about supporting it, so I'm. So I'm trying to think if there's anything else. I don't think you, the, the information that I was given, I mean, you have a deadline on one of the grants, I think. You might, you might speak to that, which is why, which is why we're looking at this today, to go ahead and do this.
So the $25,000 grant, part of the money from that is coming from the CARES Act. So that means that it has to be spent before December 31st. So that's the deadline that we have.
Okay. So anyhow, commissioners, this is a, you know, as the chairman said, just see if anybody else has any, any questions for the, the group. This is the last barn that, that has been, you know, left out of the, out of the process in, in the county, correct?
Yes, that is the, correct. Out of the schools that provide animal science. The only other school that does not have a barn is Roberson, but they, I don't believe they provide animal science.
Yeah, and FFA program is just an amazing program for our kids throughout, throughout the school. And I'm, I'm sure all the commissioners, you know, support that. Chairman, if there's not any other questions from the commissioners, I'd be happy to make a motion to, to approve the $15,000.
I have a couple of questions.
All right.
Do, and I know this is y'all's projects, I don't know if you have all the information on some of the other histories of the other projects. Do you know how the other projects, the other barn projects of the other county schools, how are they funded? And did, did the county schools put any funds towards these projects? Or is it all private fundraised? Or just, this, I think it's the first time we've had
Yeah.
A, a project like this before. So it's a little, you know, it's a little different. We have a, we have a capital commission that Commissioner Belcher and I serve on that is responsible for funding or making recommendations on funding
Right.
For a lot of the big capital projects in schools.
Yeah.
And the schools have money, they have some lottery money to spend on capital projects too. So those are the, those are kind of the financing sources for most capital projects, you know, large and small on the schools. So, but do you guys have any information on how the other projects got funded?
I can't speak on the Reynolds or the Irwin barns, but I do know that the commissioner, or the commission did grant the Owen barn some money.
True did.
And
Sure did.
And I do know that, I do know also that
How did the other one?
Ours and the other two have, have not received any Buncombe County schools money.
The other ones?
It's all been privately raised.
The other ones did not receive county funding? Okay. Right.
Yeah, so Chairman, it's a little bit, you know, it's a, it's a little bit like the discussion we had had before about, you know, the certain, there's a list and there's some things that just, you never, you just never get to, you know, and this is, this is one of them. I think the grant that, that you received was really the shot in the arm to kind of get you fired up and excited, oh, we might be able to actually pull this off because they've got so expensive over time. But the benefits to the kids is just amazing. And we're, and you know, and, and this is the right way to do this, is to have it come before the commission, to look at it, discuss it, you know, and to, to have a partnership with the other grants as well as local people that are contributing. And there's quite a few locally that, that are. And there's some others that are willing to do, I think, additional work to be able to make this happen too, so.
Yes, I will note that the, the difference with ours is with the grant specifically. Because of the grant, we do have to get moving now. So that's, we did reach out to our CTE director and our principal first to see if it could be requested in capital. And it could not be done this year, it could next year. But that's the issue is that it has to be done before December 31st. So that's why we came to you guys.
So it seems like a great project. You know, my, my only question about it, it is kind of like the, it's kind of like the playground funding, right?
Yeah.
Like it's, everybody's for it. But there's, but there's, you know, there's lots of great projects out there that would be great to fund. And just, it's kind of like, just what's the right process to use for these kinds of relatively small projects that, and I realize that with this grant, you know, you've got some time sensitivity that is relevant. But just in general, I, I kind of feel like, and we, we maybe just need to think about, like, what are the ways that we should fund some of these smaller projects, have some funds in the budget to fund smaller projects that are not going to get funded by the school capital commission because they're too small? Or they're just falling outside some of the core education stuff that the
Sure.
School Board is going to recommend? And we just, we agree on a, you know, how much we want to have available for that. And then different projects, you know, folks from throughout the county can submit proposals. You know, we have, I think that process works really well with some of the other grant funding that the county provides. So I think it's a great project. I mean, I'll support it, but I, I kind of feel like we need, just to think about the process for handling these kinds of requests in the future because other folks could come in and, you know, and it's just kind of, just taking them on one at a time is, is probably not the best way to, to do it.
And Chairman, I, you know, I, I agree with, you know, I agree with what you're saying. Most of these, I won't say most of these, a lot of these occur simply because of, you know, the circle that you may be in or somebody else may be in, and then people bring the need to you and it falls outside of the conventional funding. And then there's a, and most are, are match requests. They, when I say that, I mean, they have, they have money they've already raised, you know, it's just meeting the need of the citizens in the county. And then they need, there's more. And most of these fall in a category where you just don't get pushback on the mission associated with them. So I, I agree with you that we ought to have a, we ought to have a better way to do it, particularly in the, for the schools. Because, I mean, you know, I mean, you're on the, you're on the, the school capital commission and, and you know how long the list is, you know? That some of those smaller things that put a burden on the, on the community, they're just not able to, to, I mean, they can get part of the money, but they can't get it all. I mean, that's the bottom line with some of these smaller things.
I wholeheartedly agree we need a better process for these requests that are coming outside the budgeting cycle and the budgeting period. I know we've had conversations about organizations coming to us outside of a budget cycle, asking for significant amounts of money. And where those conversations have gone and where they've led us, and I really believe that this is another prime example of taking a look at how we do these requests. I mean, y'all, I live with a high school principal. He's like, I need money for this, I need money for that. And I was like, go through the budget cycle
Right.
And go through the process. And I'm just really afraid if we don't dig in and start looking at this, we're really setting ourselves up to, for multiple requests that are really difficult to say no to. I mean, this is, this is difficult to say no to. The playground was difficult. I mean, all of these things. And I think we really are setting ourselves up for some really hard decisions if we don't dig in and look at what happens outside that traditional budget cycle.
Are there any other questions or comments, commissioners?
Yes, I'll go in here. I have support this, I mean, because y'all have done a lot of work, you know, I know four or five years ago or whenever. If Owen would have went through the channels, this could have been a lot easier to, maybe we could have done something four years ago of putting something in place for this. And I appreciate the way y'all went out and talked with the community and looking at grants. So this is very important. I think the playgrounds was very important. Our education's very important here. So I don't know how we're going to do this. Originally, I'd heard $60,000 was a total and this was 25%. That's, you know, 25% of a matching grant or what you've raised. So how do we do this?
It's 15,000.
It's 15,000, but the original number was 60,000.
15,000 is what they ask is.
Right, 15.
So that's the
Is 25% of 60,000.
That'll be the motion.
The original cost, not half.
Yeah, 15,000 will be the motion.
So, I mean, I'm happy, I hope that, I would like to put this on here, that we pass this or vote with the recommendation that you raise the rest of the money through private or more grants, okay? It's very important to me.
Just process question. So can we, I think there's going to, someone's going to make a motion here
Yeah.
To approve the, the funding.
15,000.
Can we do that? I mean, we don't have a prepared budget amendment in front of us, but if the commission votes to approve the funding, there's, there's no reason we can't do that tonight.
You can vote to approve the funding and we can then craft the ordinance, the budget amendment and bring that back with signature or have it signed off?
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, there's a motion and second to appropriate $15,000 towards the barn project.
I have another question.
Yeah.
In regards to the budget amendment.
Yeah.
Where is the, where will the funds come from? Do we have funds available?
We did budget a contingency, and I see Jennifer's here tonight, but we did have a contingency in our budget that would require board action or it could become fund balance. But we would have the budget ordinance pulled together and bring that back on consent for you next time so you can see exactly what the revenues will be coming from.
But the revenue is there, whether it's coming from the general fund or the contingency fund, contingency fund.
It would come from general fund and we do, it would come from your fund balance or we did have a line set aside for any, if we needed any coronavirus activities
Yeah.
Or any plans that we need to have. We did set aside some contingency funding that would require board action as well.
I would feel more comfortable making a decision after seeing that.
I don't think we should use the COVID funding for this.
No, no, it needs to be, come out of the general fund.
Is general fund that we just set aside in case there was a second wave or something? We had some funds that we could bring to you to use. So we do have a contingency fund or we can use fund balance.
So if it makes it easier, does Chairman, would it make it easier for me just to direct it to come out of, of fund balance?
I think that's where it should come from.
Yeah, to make it cleaner, that makes it cleaner. So I'll amend my motion for the $15,000 to come out of fund balance because we all, we have the matching, matching funds from the grant.
So second, let me, okay.
Yeah. That makes it cleaner.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Just a process question. She mentioned the grant is coming from CARES, so it has to be done by December, has to be spent by December 31st. So we're going to put funds in, but not all of it. We still have to go fundraise a significant portion. What if that doesn't happen? Do we still just give our funds or what?
You can ask, but the, the monies, the, the fundraising locally is, is there. That's not going to be an issue at all.
No, just, you know, this week we have had $2,500 come in, is that correct? As well as we talked with the people over the grant, they said it has to be started, meaning at least graded and concrete laid before December 31st. So it has to at least have that part absolutely done by December 31st.
I have a question. What is the entity that would receive the funding? Is it the school or is it a FFA or who would actually receive the funding?
We would need to give it to the schools.
It would need to go to
Buncombe County school system.
Buncombe County schools.
Similar to we did with the playgrounds.
And then we would direct it to go to that, which would be a problem. He's got a comment.
And then who is the entity that received the CARES funding that would be used for this project?
So all of the funding is going through our INCA FFA Alumni Association. It was kind of like a band boosters, but it's a boosters club for our FFA program. So all the funds is, the GO grant has gone into there and all the other private fundraising has gone into that.
So all the fundraising's gone through that
Yes.
That entity, although ours will need to go to the county schools. And, 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 and the CARES funding grant was applied for by that organization?
I'm sorry?
The, the grant, the federal grant, the CARES grant was, who applied for that grant?
We did.
FFA.
It was just me and him.
The FFA alumni did?
Just us as the teachers applied for it.
And, and which, but that grant funding will also go to the FFA alumni organization?
They first wrote it to the school system, so it went to the county, but then we got approval from the grant to move it to our alumni association.
So it goes to the county.
Also, the other funding of the local community funding has went through the foundation through Christie Cheek, so that might be another option for it to run through the foundation.
Okay, thank you.
So Here's the, here's the, so it's a Buncombe County, so that would go through the Buncombe County Schools Foundation?
Yes, if that is more comfortable for you all, that is an option to go through the foundation.
I think the county manager's saying, we need to make our appropriation to the county school system.
Okay, that's fine.
And then where it goes from there is, they can handle that, but we need to
Cause they've done that before, that's fine.
Similar to how we did the playgrounds, it went to them and we told them that
This is what it's
The board approved this, the playgrounds at these specific schools. We'll have to do the same thing here.
Okay.
And the barn's not going to be built by the end of the year. You just need to expend these funds so that they're incurred costs by the end of the year. We're just trying to get a sense, or is there any risk around if we put our money in that the project, you know, for some reason doesn't happen?
No, with these funds, I, I honestly believe we can have the barn up this year with the help of these funds, at the latest, early next year.
All right, commissioners, any other questions, comments?
I agree, this is a very compelling project. I want to thank you all for how entrepreneurial you've been and thank you for sharing your time tonight. The, the, the question I have is whether we could just slightly slow down our process, which I think, to your point earlier, Commissioner Belcher, we usually do better when we take a little bit more time on process. And if we could ask staff to come back in two weeks with a proposed budget amendment, but also a proposal around how we might entertain other proposals like this, let's say from the school systems, to create a really clear, transparent, accessible way. My concern is, has nothing to do with your project at all, and y'all have gone through good channels to start this conversation, but my concern is that there's schools all across our community that have needs that some of us may know about, others may not. And, and I think if we're going to be allocating funds outside the budget cycle to address those, I'd like us to do it in a way that's fair, consistent, and transparent above all. Versus if someone needing to work through a political process to have a vote. So my, my, my friendly and supportive request would be that we just slow things down a little bit, have this on our agenda for the 20th. I'd be happy to be a commissioner supporting it as an agenda item on October 20th, but that it really has that two-pronged package of a budget amendment and an accompanying proposal about how we can do, how we can hear additional ideas from our community like this. And we could maybe designate an amount for the, this current fiscal year that we would be comfortable drawing from the fund balance so we'd know what we were working with.
So I'm not going to disagree with the, I'm not going, I won't disagree with the, with the policy of it. There's just some, some things come up, there's time associated with it. I think we should develop a policy, particularly on schools. But I also think there's just going to be times when the community is going to have a need and it's going to happen and it's going to come up and it's going to be brought to commissioners at different times. And then we just have to look at it and decide whether we want to do that or not. Yeah, I made a motion for the $15,000 come out of the general fund. That has been seconded. I agree with, I agree with Commissioner Beach Farrar that we ought to look at some, particularly when it comes to the schools, I mean, the, these things are going to come up. And if we have an opportunity to be able to, to get, you know, particularly in light of COVID and others, to be able to get their kids outside and get them involved and, you know, and this is the proper way and it is extremely transparent. We're in front of everybody, y'all are here presenting it, we're clearly asking for a certain amount of money after you guys have already raised a certain amount of money. So it's extremely transparent because we're having the conversation. I do agree that, you know, maybe we can develop other policies, but I, I don't want to slow this particular request down by, I think we can do that later. Have the, have the county manager put that in consent so that we have that budget ordinance properly. And then if we want to look at, you know, establishing policies and come together and see what that list looks like and who it is, then we probably should do that. But some of these things are just going to happen organically, they're just going to come out of the community and, you know, it's going to be our job to go yea or nay on a lot of things, so. But anyhow, I made a motion to, to, to approve it. And I would like to, I would like to continue that conversation that Commissioner Farrar had mentioned and, and that, that manager that you had mentioned. I think that's a good idea that we ought to do that.
Could you all just clarify the timeline that you're working under? I know grading has to be completed by December 31st, but is there a specific timeline by which you would need the county to make a decision? Other than as soon as possible, but is there any sort of written thing in the grant criteria or anything like that?
We had to reach out separately to even ask if that would be an option, that the grading and the concrete, because they knew it was a tight deadline. I would have to research further, but my understanding is that it needs to be up as soon as possible considering the money is from the CARES Act.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments, any commissioners?
I would like to go ahead
I would like to go ahead, cause I mean, I think I heard you, Commissioner Farrar, that you would vote for it in two weeks. And I know we've had these conversations over the last four years that we've been here, and they are times that we all want to put things off a couple of weeks, but seems like it don't. And me knowing the area that I'm in and the people that I've seen make the donation, I feel very sure that this right here could speed up them getting the money in the next couple of weeks.
The other thing I'll say in our hush is that we, we, we did receive several emails that I thought would be part of the comment on it. We did receive quite a few emails asking us to, to do this too, so the public, the public did reach out and confirm that they thought it would be a good investment.
So, let's vote on this in just a second. My, my, I'm gonna support it, but I, we do need to think about a process, cause if we put the word out like, hey, we're inviting every, we've got more than forty schools in this county. I wanna invite every school to bring us the thing that you want funded the most at your school that nobody's ever found the money for. Bring us your most compelling idea. I guarantee you, every single school in this county would bring us a heart-tugging story about something that they have worked on hard, they've raised some money on, but they just, they need some other. Every school has a similar story. It'd be a different kind of project, but they all, they all have things. And just taking them on one at a time, it's just not the right way to do it. You know, we need to kinda say, hey, here's how much we can fund for this kinda stuff. Let's look, let's invite all these proposals and then let's look at them together and make the tough budget decisions. Just doing it one at a time is just not the best long-term way to do it. There is a motion in the second, so we'll, we'll vote on this. Mr. Whiteside says.
Yeah, I've been quiet. You know, I'm for the project. I think it's an excellent project. But if we vote for this tonight, can we still get, or is it asking too much, Avril, to ask the staff to look at this and bring us a proposal back to consider at the next meeting? Not for this, but going forward, cause my concern is, this is gonna keep coming up, but it's time, we need to look at it, and I agree, we need a proposal for this.
And you're referring to the proposal that Jasmine Beach Farrar mentioned?
Right, right.
Yes, we will take a look at that. I wrote that down as something that we can start researching immediately tomorrow.
Okay.
To craft that and work with our attorneys to make sure we have the right language of what a policy will look like.
So, and, and I'm gonna say this in our hush, okay? I understand policy and I think we should do it. The most important thing to me is supporting the community in transparency. The community brought this need to us. It was a, it is a wise investment of tax dollars. It is not a bad investment of tax dollars. And we are vetting it publicly in front of everybody on the screen. It can't be more transparent. It, you know, my, when people, I am not going to say no to people when they call within the community and they have a need. I'm gonna bring it to you guys if it makes sense, if I feel like it, that it, that it meets a good need in the community and it's a wise investment of tax dollars. And I, we can't policy away that, and I know that y'all aren't saying that, that we should have better policy and good policy. The challenge is, and Commissioner, and Chairman knows this, the challenge is, is particularly in the school capital commission fund, is that the list is just so long. And we can't, we can't do it all, but when you got the public and the private and, you know, you've got federal grants and you've got some other things for the county to be able to help is, is, is really, it's not a bad thing. We gotta do it the right way, but this is a very transparent way to do it, so. Thank you.
I got one more here.
Last one, good for this.
I agree. We have set a better policy, and, you know, I think everybody here's made the best points they can. But the one thing we better remember is back, Playground Number Twenty-nine, this right here is probably fifty-seven. Nobody's ever brought these to us. They might've got brought to the school board, but they've never been brought to the commission to say, we need to put this much money aside for this. And with Amanda Edwards' husband or being a principal, and she hears it all the time, what money you got? And she heard it, you know, myself and Commissioner Belcher is in our district. We represent District Three or elected in District Three, but we represent the whole county. And it seems like District Three really reaches out a lot to us when they have a issue that they would like to talk about. And we don't do it by, you know, outside. We listen and say, you know, we're not gonna pay for all of it. And they have worked really hard to get grants, raising money and everything. Better policies is a fix, but I think this is pretty crucial. We need to do it now and get it and just say, okay, from this day forward, we're gonna look at what is the best policy we can do and what we can budget at budget time, you know, for any of these projects.
All right, all right. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you for being here. Great project, and it, I think it sparked a really good conversation about some of the things we need to look at too, about how to handle stuff in the future. So, good job, and we look forward to the project going ahead.
I wanna say thank you guys again for your time.
Thank you for bringing it to us.
Thank you so much.
Hey, before we get, you made a point, Avril, if we, if they don't get the money, I mean, what, are we gonna put anything in there that? We never finish that conversation, I don't think.
And unless the board directs that, there'll be nothing in there. It will be a money that we'll just send to the school system, to send to this.
That's right.
Organization, but unless you put a restriction in there, there will be nothing that we, that staff would impose beyond what you guys put out there.
So, let's just talk about that for just a second.
So the, so the money goes to the, the money goes to the school system. It's like the, it's similar to, and, and that money is, is directed to go to this barn project. Okay, and so there, we know that the grant is there, we know the other funds are there.
So that money. Are all the funds, with the fifteen, with this funding, is the project fully funded? Or is there additional funding that still needs to be secured?
It's not fully funded.
So we'd be at thirty-six plus fifteen. That puts us forty-eight, so we're close.
Okay.
I feel really, really, really comfortable that we'll get the rest of the money pretty soon.
Okay, so the concern is that, you know, what we don't wanna see happen is that our funds are used and spent, but then the project doesn't happen. Like, I think that's the fundamental concern, so we would like to probably have a process to make sure our funds don't get spent until there, until there is certainty that the project can be executed on. So I think what we've done is we've, we've pledged the funding, but I think what, I'm just, I'm just kinda, I'm saying we, but I'm just kinda thinking out loud here. I'd like to just ask the staff to, you know, monitor the project and make sure that our funds don't get spent unless there's confidence that the organization is prepared to, you know, fully execute on the project. We don't wanna partially build project that's got our funds in it and isn't successfully happened. It's very unlikely to happen, but we have seen these things happen before. So I think that's, that's the kinda process I would hope the staff would take on it. Do, any, does anybody disagree with that?
Well, you know, like we've done in the past with some projects, that could be the last fifteen that they spend.
I live right down the street from Momentum, so I get a, I get a reminder about, you know, that these things can happen.
Yep.
And that was a, that was a big project that, you know, got started and they didn't have the funding.
Sure did.
And it was a failed project. So this is a much smaller project, but I think we need, any kinda construction project like this, we just need to make sure the county's taxpayer interests are looked after.
So I think however it's written up is fine. I don't, I don't think that the FFA's gonna have a problem with that. The reality is, is, is in that community that there are already people that are stepping up, you know, to fund the rest of this money. The original amount, some of the quotes that you've had, you know, those are also being looked at and being discussed on how other people in the community can step in and help. I mean, it is truly a community project, and the purpose of this is to help with that community project and make sure that those dollars are, are protected. The motion was for them to come out of the general fund and that we are to have verification that those, and that'll go to the school system. And then, and the school system is required to make sure that that, that money is properly allocated to this project. I don't see that being a problem.
So, I'm hearing that we would make sure that that project is built, not just the school system, but there'll be verification on our side as well, so I just wanna make sure.
But we may not be able to be the last in. If we are the last in, that's fine.
I will note, if you look on the back page where the funding is actually listed out on the special notes, we do have potential for more things to be donated. For example, the grading has been donated, the survey has been donated. And we're still waiting other concrete quotes that may be at a lower price. So we just wanted to be very clear that this is probably the maximum price and that there is a potential for that to maybe go down some.
Okay, all right. Commissioners, thank you all very much. Good luck. We look forward to seeing, seeing the project come online. All right, commissioners, the next item on the agenda is the health benefits item, and Sharon Burke, our HR director, is gonna be back to talk about this item.
And Max, whenever you're ready? Thank you. Good evening again. I just wanted to go over once again with you the benefits that we would like to offer our employees for fiscal year twenty-one, as we do have some additions and some modifications happening to the programs. So, on the screen right now, we have no changes to our medical or prescription plan. And in fact, USI has recommended that we also do not offer any increases to the staff or any increases to the county as well. Our dental plan, we did shop out for our dental plan, and what we were able to do is move, or we recommend that we move from a self-insured plan to a fully insured plan. And we would offer employees two different types of programs, a base program and a buy-up program. The buy-up program, we are enhancing that a little bit to offer adult orthodontia. And so what I'd like to do is now show you what the, the difference in the premiums would be. So if you look at the first column, I guess first column to your left where it says current premiums, that's what our employees pay right now for the buy-up program. And then if you look at the renewal premiums, all the rates that we were able to secure, all but one is actually a decrease to our employees. This is a hundred percent employee paid-for benefit, and so employee and family would have a slight increase on their monthly premium. But once again, there are enhanced benefits for that as well. Oh, probably the most important thing, these rates are guaranteed for two years, so there will be no increase on those. Our vision, we are looking to move from Blue Cross Blue Shield over to Superior Vision. They would offer a broader network and they would also offer premium savings for us as well. And we will also look to offer new voluntary benefits, and those benefits would include accident insurance. And that, again, that provides assistance to those that, you know, for whatever reason. It's, it's very similar to an Aflac program. It also has a life insurance policy that's included in the premiums for that, critical care, or critical illness, and then a whole life policy. Once again, those are a hundred percent employee-funded. Those would be the, the options that we're offering for this year, and I believe we have public hearings, that means, no public hearing. So, this is an inform, information session, and do you have any questions that I can answer for you?
So we don't actually need to do anything on this, or we do need to vote on this, right?
You need to approve the plan. I think that, if you look at the recommended motion, you need to approve the plan and the changes that we're looking at making.
All right, thank you, Sharon. Commissioners, is there a question or is there a motion to approve the plan and vendor changes and the associated changes to the insurance plans outlined by staff?
So moved.
Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Wonderful, thank you.
Great job, thanks so much.
It's a good point.
All right, next up is a budget amendment for our JCPC funding plan, and Jennifer Barnett's gonna help us out with this. Along with following this, there'll be budget amendments for HHS CARES funding and school ADM capital fund, school safety and the retaining wall project. So we'll have, Jennifer, help us out with all these.
Certainly. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. The first budget amendment before you is related to the general fund. Each year, the North Carolina Department of Public Safety provides funding allocation, this, this particular year, in the amount of six hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. This funding allocation, we are the fiscal agent for, and the Buncombe County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council is the advisory council, which is tasked with overseeing and monitoring and deciding the allocation of those particular funds. Already budgeted in the general fund is the fifteen thousand five hundred dollars, which is the administration portion provided with this funding source. Our request this evening is to budget the expenditure of the six hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars in the general fund to enable the pass-through of that funding once, you all have already seen those allocations, so we need to be able to pass that through, back out to those identified organizations that are in support of preventing delinquent youth, supporting at-risk youth and their families in Buncombe County.
Is there a motion to approve the budget amendment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Great. So the second budget amendment is additionally for the general fund. Health and Human Services has received two new additional funding allocations from two sources, both for use by twelve-thirty of twenty-twenty. The first is, public health is in receipt of three hundred and four thousand nine hundred and eight dollars. It is proposed that this funding would continue to support the COVID nurse team. Additionally, the interpreters for the COVID testing sites and medical supplies. The second is from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, a funding amount of sixty-nine thousand two hundred dollars to provide a one hundred dollar monthly supplemental payment to our foster care providers for the months of July through September who are tasked with the, and responsibility for the care of our foster children. And so this establishes those two funding dollar amounts will receive the revenue and the expenditure for those purposes.
Is there a motion to approve the budget?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Moving on to our final budget amendment for the evening, it is for our school capital ADM capital fund. Two projects were brought before the School Capital Fund Commission on September the fourteenth, twenty-twenty, where the School Capital Fund Commission is recommending these two particular items. A previously funded project for the Montford School, or the, the Montford Wall. There is savings in the Montford School twenty-eighteen and Montford School twenty-nineteen projects, which have been, have completed. And the fund commission has requested that the savings from that project be reallocated to the Montford Wall as they do anticipate additional expenditures as a result of needing to adhere to the historic commission to be in compliance with that. So it would bring that budget to one million one hundred and five thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars. The second project was a new project recommended from the School Capital Fund Commission in a total dollar amount of seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. One hundred and ten thousand's recommended for Asheville City Schools, six hundred and sixty thousand is recommended for Buncombe County Schools. And this is to, as a result of the security assessment, these were identified needs that they need to upgrade their facilities with. So the request is to budget, to move the one savings to the one project and to budget the funding for the safety-related.
So I'm gonna move approval. I just got a couple of quick comments. The, the board had already approved the, the upgrading of the security throughout all the schools. And I'm just glad that this is finally done, and the Montford is just, simply as you said, is just running some additional, additional costs, but so good. good. I appreciate the Chairman being on that commission, and we've, we've all kind of worked through these things over the past, you know, year, I guess, but.
I'll second the motion. The commission, the School Capital Commission spent a fair amount of time looking at these, everyone's in agreement on these, we're going to have a longer list of other projects to recommend shortly as well, because these are not all the funds that we have available for this year, but we wanted to move these two pieces ahead as they were kind of at the top of the list. Any other questions? All in favor of the two school capital projects? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you so much. Okay, I think we have our board appointments to go over, and the first group is the Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee, we have five appointments to make, there's five applicants that we have.
So I'll make a motion, we appoint Teeny Shilo, Caroline Levi, Daniel Bierman, Susan Shimer, and Meg White.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we have two reappointments and two openings, and we have the two members who want to apply, to be reappointed, and then we have two additional applicants.
I recommend, or I move that we approve Jeremy Booker, Melissa Onkley, Michael Patterson, and Tim Henderson.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And finally, under Health and Human Services, we have two appointments, we have two applicants.
I move to approve Mona Elam and Leanne Tucker.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Commissioners, that concludes all the items on our agenda, we do have a need for a closed session. Ms. Hawke, could you tell us about the purpose of that closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you actually have three matters. One is an economic development matter presented to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A4, and then two legal matters to consult with an attorney employed by the public body for updates. The first one is Heaton v. Van Duncan et al., 20CVS 3247, and the second one is Hyatt &amp; Barrett versus Quentin Miller et al., 1:19CV250, that's in the Western District of North Carolina Federal Court.
All right, is there a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We do not expect to take any, take up any business when we adjourn. From the closed session, we'll simply adjourn to the end. All right, we're in closed session.